Good morning, everyone. 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 Good morning, everyone.[344.12][344.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[347.12][347.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[350.12][350.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[353.12][353.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[356.12][356.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[359.12][359.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[362.12][362.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[365.12][365.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[368.12][368.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[371.12][371.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[374.12][374.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[377.12][377.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[380.12][380.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[383.12][383.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[386.12][386.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[389.12][389.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[392.12][392.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[395.12][395.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[398.12][398.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[401.12][401.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[404.12][404.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[407.12][407.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[410.12][410.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[413.12][413.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[416.12][416.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[419.12][419.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[422.12][422.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[425.12][425.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[428.12][428.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[431.12][431.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[434.12][434.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[437.12][437.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[440.12][440.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[443.12][443.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[446.12][446.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[449.12][449.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[452.12][452.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[455.12][455.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[458.12][458.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[461.12][461.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[464.12][464.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[467.12][467.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[470.12][470.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[473.12][473.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[476.12][476.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[479.12][479.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[482.12][482.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[485.12][485.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[488.12][488.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[491.12][491.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[494.12][494.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[497.12][497.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[500.12][500.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[503.12][503.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[506.12][506.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[509.12][509.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[512.12][512.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[515.12][515.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[518.12][518.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[521.12][521.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[524.12][524.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[527.12][527.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[530.12][530.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[533.12][533.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[536.12][536.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[539.12][539.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[542.12][542.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[545.12][545.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[548.12][548.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[551.12][551.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[554.12][554.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[557.12][557.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[560.12][560.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[563.12][563.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[566.12][566.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[569.12][569.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[572.12][572.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[575.12][575.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[578.12][578.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[581.12][581.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[584.12][584.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[587.12][587.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[590.12][590.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[593.12][593.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[596.12][596.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[599.12][599.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[602.12][602.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[605.12][605.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[608.12][608.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[611.12][611.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[614.12][614.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[617.12][617.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[620.12][620.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[623.12][623.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[626.12][626.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[629.12][629.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[632.12][632.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[635.12][635.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[638.12][638.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[641.12][641.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[644.12][644.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[647.12][647.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[650.12][650.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[653.12][653.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[656.12][656.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[659.12][659.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[662.12][662.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[665.12][665.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[668.12][668.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[671.12][671.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[674.12][674.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[677.12][677.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[680.12][680.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[683.12][683.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[686.12][686.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[689.12][689.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[692.12][692.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[695.12][695.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[698.12][698.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[701.12][701.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[704.12][704.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[707.12][707.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[710.12][710.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[713.12][713.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[716.12][716.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[719.12][719.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[722.12][722.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[725.12][725.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[728.12][728.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[731.12][731.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[734.12][734.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[737.12][737.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[740.12][740.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[743.12][743.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[746.12][746.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[749.12][749.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[752.12][752.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[755.12][755.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[758.12][758.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[761.12][761.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[764.12][764.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[767.12][767.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[770.12][770.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[773.12][773.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[776.12][776.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[779.12][779.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[782.12][782.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[785.12][785.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[788.12][788.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[791.12][791.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[794.12][794.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[797.12][797.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[800.12][800.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[803.12][803.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[806.12][806.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[809.12][809.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[812.12][812.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[815.12][815.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[818.12][818.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[821.12][821.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[824.12][824.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[827.12][827.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[830.12][830.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[833.12][833.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[836.12][836.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[839.12][839.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[842.12][842.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[845.12][845.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[848.12][848.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[851.12][851.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[854.12][854.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[857.12][857.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[860.12][860.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[863.12][863.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[866.12][866.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[869.12][869.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[872.12][872.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[875.12][875.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[878.12][878.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[881.12][881.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[884.12][884.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[887.12][887.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[890.12][890.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[893.12][893.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[896.12][896.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[899.12][899.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[902.12][902.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[905.12][905.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[908.12][908.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[911.12][911.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[914.12][914.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[917.12][917.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[920.12][920.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[923.12][923.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[926.12][926.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[929.12][929.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[932.12][932.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[935.12][935.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[938.12][938.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[941.12][941.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[944.12][944.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[947.12][947.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[950.12][950.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[953.12][953.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[956.12][956.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[959.12][959.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[962.12][962.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[965.12][965.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[968.12][968.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[971.12][971.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[974.12][974.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[977.12][977.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[980.12][980.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[983.12][983.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[986.12][986.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[989.12][989.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[992.12][992.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[995.12][995.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[998.12][998.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[1001.12][1001.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[1004.12][1004.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[1007.12][1007.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[1010.12][1010.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[1013.12][1013.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[1016.12][1016.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[1019.12][1019.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[1022.12][1022.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[1025.12][1025.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[1028.12][1028.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[1031.12][1031.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[1034.12][1034.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[1037.12][1037.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[1040.12][1040.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[1043.12][1043.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[1046.12][1046.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[1049.12][1049.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[1052.12][1052.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[1055.12][1055.12][S01. Good morning, everyone.[1058.12][1058.12][S01. Good morning, everyone. Good morning, may I have your attention, please? We're going to call the meeting of the July 17th El Paso County Planning Commission to order, please. Good morning, everyone. Thanks for being here. My name is Tim Drobridge. I'm the vice president and I'll be acting as chair today. So before we start, I need to introduce the commission members and appoint who's going to be voting today. The with us in voting today, we have Ms. Britton-Jack. Ms. Becky Fuller is online. Mr. Mraz.
Good morning.
Mr. Whitney and myself. So we have, to start with today, we have six voting members. So we do have a quorum. With that, I will call up the report items. Staff.
Good morning, commissioners. For the record, Megan Harrington, Planning Director. I do not have any items to report on this morning, but Mr. Kilgore, do you have anything to add that I may have missed? Thank you.
No, Mr. Chair, we're good. Thank you.
All right. Excellent. Thank you all. All right. Now is the time on our agenda when we invite public comment for items that are not on today's agenda. So if there's anyone from the public who wants to come up and speak about something that is not on our agenda today, now is your time. Anybody? Is there anybody online for a comment that's not on the agenda? No? All right. Very good. Ms. Banks, could you pull up the slide I asked you to show? Since we have several things going today, I wanted to give everybody an overview of our process. For those of you who have been here before, it can seem fairly, well, it is fairly lengthy, but it can seem a little daunting and confusing. When we hear an item, when we get to our full regular item calendar, this is the process that we follow. There's a presentation section where the staff and the person applying for the plan or the variance or whatever it is gives their presentation. We then open it up for public comment, for those in favor and those against. Then the applicant has a chance to rebut and answer questions or any concerns that were raised. And finally, the commission takes it up and asks final questions for staff, and then we make a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners. So that's the process that we take. It can take a while, depending upon how many comments there are and how detailed the project is, but this is the process that we will follow today. So appreciate your patience with us as we work through this because we want to make sure that everybody, both those for and against, have an opportunity to speak. All right. Oh, the other thing is if you do come up to speak, we have a sign-in sheet on the podium and we ask that you sign in so that we have the correct spelling of your name and we ask that you identify yourself to us so we know how to address you. All right. All right. With that, we will move to our consent calendar. The first thing on our consent calendar today, of course, are the minutes from our June 19th meeting. Is there anybody who had any comments or corrections for the minutes? Ms. Fuller, online, you have anything?
I wasn't there, so nope, I've got nothing. Thank you.
All right. Hearing none, we will consider the minutes from the June 19th meeting approved. We are going to shuffle up our agenda. I'm going to move item 3F, file number ID 251, the Special District Service Plan for Haven Valley Metropolitan District. I'm going to move that up. Mr. Byers, I understand that you need to step out for this.
Yeah, I have a conflict of interest, so I will step out and return once the vote is over.
All right. Thank you, sir. We'll let you know. And even with Mr. Byers' departure, we still have a quorum of five members. All right. This is where it gets interesting. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to have this item pulled and considered as a regular item? That means it gets a full hearing. Consent item calendar, consent calendar items don't have a full hearing. There may be a couple of questions about the item that the commissioners can ask. If not, then we generally take a vote and move on. So anybody that wants to hear this as a regular item? Commissioners? Ms. Fuller?
I sent Carrie one quick question this morning that I don't think it needs to be pulled, and I think she can just answer it.
All right. Very good.
Good morning, Carrie Parsons with Planning and Community Development. Ms. Fuller did email me this morning, excuse me, text me this morning and asked if I could just clarify the purpose of the overlapping districts such as the sanitation and separate water district. And for the record, those two, the security water and then the security wastewater sanitation districts, those don't provide the typical service or the statutory purposes that this particular district is requesting under Title 32. So for instance, security water is just a water district, as is the sanitation, just a sanitation. So that being said, after this proposed district were to design, construct the water and wastewater infrastructure, then security water and then security wastewater districts would inspect that infrastructure and accept it for ownership and maintenance, but they wouldn't bear the burden of the design and construction, nor would they be capable of constructing roads or drainages because that's not in their purview, for the record.
All right. Good. Thank you. Any other questions from commissioners? No? All right. With that, the chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Mraz.
With regards to agenda item 3F, file number ID 251, for Special District Service Plan, Haven Valley Metropolitan District, I move for approval in accordance with the attached resolution with six conditions and one notation, and that this item be forwarded to the Board of County Commissioners for their consideration.
Very good. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Whitney. Any discussion on the motion? All right. Hearing none, we'll call the roll. Ms. Britton-Jack.
Yes.
Mr. Mraz.
Aye.
Mr. Whitney.
Aye.
Ms. Fuller.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye in this item. It's recommended for approval by a vote of five to zero. All right. Mr. Mraz, would you let Mr. Byers come back? Mr. Byers is back. Ms. Fuller, do you need to drop off now? Or could you stay?
I'm on vacation, so I called from Gunnison County. I'm going to drop off and I will see you at the next meeting, but thanks, everyone.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Fuller.
Bye.
All right. As you can see, we're juggling a few things today. With that, we'll move on to our next consent item, item 3B SF 254, the final plat for Table Rock Homesteads, a final plat. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to have this pulled and heard as a regular item? Any commissioners?
Sure. I don't.
Do you have a quick question?
I have a quick question.
All right. Mr. Mraz, please.
I'm just looking, a citizen wrote in and was talking about the concern over the driveway for Lot 10. I don't know if you can address that concern.
Sure. Joseph Letke, for the record, Planning and Community Development. We have reached out to that neighbor, and I know the applicant has as well. Ed Schoenheit, the review engineer, can chat a little bit more on that drainage.
Good morning, Ed Schoenheit, Department of Public Works. So for any of the driveway access points for the development, they'll have to put a driveway access permit in which will be inspected for any grading requirements or a culvert prior to installation. As far as any spacing to the adjacent property, that just has to meet the standard specifications as laid out in the engineering criteria manual.
So at this point, it's good, the concern will be addressed as it proceeds down the line through the rest of the process?
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Yes, sir. You have a comment or question?
Comment. I'm the one that wrote that.
Oh, all right. Come on, that's fine. Come on up and sign in.
Go ahead and speak in the.
Yeah, you can speak from there. That's fine.
So I did go back and look. It's 28 feet wide, 27 to property line, so they get that. And he talked about it may be paved, but I see that there's a 20-foot public utilities there, so I'm guessing it might be gravel in the future. And I think the elevation drops about three feet, so as long as they don't build it up, it shouldn't flood back into my property. So basically, I want to say, you know, we've covered that. Of course, everyone would like to have the antelope. There's about 30 on there right now, but I understand development, so it'll just be what it is and hopefully they'll be good neighbors.
All right. And could you state your name?
My name is Scott Souter. And I own the property, as I said, adjacent and wrote the email.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Souter. Appreciate you coming in today. Anybody else? The chair will entertain a motion. All right. Ms. Britton-Jack.
Mr. Chair, with regards to agenda item number 3B, file number SF 254, for the final plat for Table Rock Homesteads, I move for approval in accordance with the attached resolutions with seven conditions, four notations, one waiver, and with the finding of sufficiency for, with regard to water quality, quantity, and dependability. And I move that this item be forwarded to the Board of County Commissioners for their consideration.
Very good. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Byers? Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, the chair will. Seeing none, the chair will call the roll. Ms. Britton-Jack.
Aye.
Mr. Byers.
Aye.
Mr. Marais.
Aye.
Mr. Whitney.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, and this item is approved for recommendation to the board, five to zero. All right. Agenda Item 3C, file number SF 246, the final plat for Silverado Ranch, filing number two. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to have this pulled and heard as a regular Anybody online? Commissioners? Anybody want to have it pulled? Any quick questions or comments? Right, seeing none, the chair will entertain a motion. Mr. Marais.
Mr. Chair, with regards to Agenda Item 3C, file number SF 246, for final plat of Silverado Ranch, filing number two, I move for approval in accordance with the attached resolution with five conditions, four notations, and one waiver, and with a finding of sufficiency for water quality, quantity, and dependability, and this item be forwarded to the Board of County Commissioners for their consideration.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Whitney. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we'll call the roll. Ms. Britton-Jack.
Aye.
Mr. Byers. Mr. Marais.
Aye.
Mr. Whitney.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, and this item is recommended for approval, five to zero. Agenda Item 3D, file number SP 223, a preliminary plan for Windermere, preliminary plan, minor amendment, phase two. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to have this pulled and heard? Yes, do you want it heard as pulled, or you have a simple question? Okay. We'll let you come up.
Well, good morning. Thank you for allowing me opportunity to speak. My name is Ben Boglesong. I'm a resident and a homeowner in the Windermere community, adjacent to this planned multifamily housing unit. Just want to start off, I acknowledge there's a potential benefit of mixed housing communities with a mix of single-family homes. Townhomes and apartments definitely lead to vibrant communities, and those communities can bring amenities and affordable housing solutions. So this is a good thing overall. But to assure these benefits, mixed housing communities must be planned well with adequate infrastructure. And our community was designed for 203 units, not more than 300 units, as is proposed in this amendment. So my concern is really multifaceted. I'm concerned there's not an appropriate existing infrastructure to account for increased traffic, both into and out of our community, that the exasperated, the parking situation that we currently experience will be exasperated, and that there hasn't not been adequate public notification for this proposal. So currently, there's two access points in the neighborhood. Adding 150 dwellings will increase the traffic and the congestion into and out of our neighborhood during peak hours, and I would believe the developer should plan for multiple access points that would help distribute traffic flow and prevent congestion. I've reviewed the traffic impact study, and it looks like it's taking into account existing traffic patterns, but I'm concerned that with nearly doubling the amount of traffic, especially during peak hours, that that exiting and entering our community, which already has quite a bit of traffic, will be exasperated. There is a planned light, and I think that will help quite a bit, but that light is at the corner of Antelope and Carefree, not regulating traffic into and out of our community. Additionally, parking, so in our Windermere community as it stands, we have a pretty significant parking shortage. About half the homes in the neighborhood are currently rentals. We're not within the city's residential parking program, and so many of the houses are sublet. So for instance, on my street alone, many of the four-bedroom homes, they're, you know, single-family homes, but they're sublet. So the existing infrastructure is meant for like two parking spaces plus one on the street, and the home in front of me, for instance, has eight cars that park there. So the parking is pretty significant. And my concern is that if the, this plan does not adequately account for parking in the community, that it will have spill off and run over into our neighborhood and make that problem even worse. So also, I'd just like to point out that the notification process, I noticed there were 62 surrounding properties that were notified. Only eight of those properties are actually within our Windermere community, and so most of them are outside of the community in an adjacent, and that notification happened on July 1st, which was less than 30 days ago. And then with regard to the details themselves, as on the Electronic Development Application Review Program, I could not find any drawings of the multi-dwelling buildings, and those were requested actually by the Enumeration's Plans Examiner, Ms. Vanderbeek, about a year ago, but those drawings have not been provided. So it's really difficult, as a member of the public and a member of this community, to be able to actually review the plan and fully understand what impacts that may or may not have on my community. Again, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak this morning.
All right. Thanks for coming in. It's Boglesong?
Yes, sir. Boglesong.
Okay. Thanks for coming in. Appreciate your attention. Let's see, I forgot, who's the planner on this? Would you like to come and talk about traffic, or is Mr. La Force the traffic engineer here?
Morning, Mr. La Force. Gilbert La Force, Engineering Manager. So what questions do you have for traffic?
I was just wondering if you could address Mr. Boglesong's concern about traffic and access points.
Yeah, so they're planning on internal access for this new development, and the traffic study based on standard practices have shown that it meets the level of service D or better for all the access points, and so at that point, they've met the criteria for accepting the traffic studies.
So it's my understanding only two access points are required. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then there was a question about the traffic light. At what point is a traffic light warranted?
That one, I believe that they might have to do continuing traffic counts, and that's with the city on that traffic signal. So the requirement that the city only asked for was to provide escrow for that signal, and then I think they'll be the ones to determine once it's warranted or when all the traffic counts hit that warrant.
Okay. And then finally, there was a question about not being able to find the plan in EDARP. I assume that's just, it's probably there, but it could be hard to find.
I'd have to defer that one to the planner.
All right. Ms. Bagley.
Kylie Bagley, I was the planner on the project. So EDARP doesn't do a very great job of linking our different development applications. The property owner does have an application in for a site development plan, and that is under file number PPR 2442. The only way to find that in EDARP would be to search by the parcel or to know that parcel number, so I believe that—
Would it not show up under Windermere or the other plan?
No, it would not, since it was under a separate file type.
Oh, I see.
In EDARP.
Very good. Okay. Thank you. Mr. Whitney, yes, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just real quick on, just on process, so I think this application is for 150 multifamily units, and I think I saw the letter of intent, which is now 13 months old, obviously, which is 277 units, so just as a matter, or up to 277 units. So just as a matter of process, I'm assuming the 150 represents discussions you've had with the developer, and that's where you ended up, at 150.
So in their site development plan application, they ended up with 104 single-family attached dwelling units.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else? Mr. Marais.
That did answer one of my questions. I know this rezoning came up, I think between my two terms back last August, so I had to kind of review where we were there, and that was one of the questions that was sitting there. Just the traffic study, can you just talk about, were there any major differences between when it's RS 5000 and RM 30? Was there anything that really jumped out in terms of differences in the follow-on actions that would be, that would be there?
I didn't do the review on this, so I'm just kind of covering for Daniel. I could double-check and get back with you on what the traffic study had on the rezon compared to this one, and get back with you later.
Okay. Because I, yeah, that was just a question I had, and I'm sure, I kind of went through the traffic impact study, but again, not an expert in it, and so I was kind of going through it, just trying to see what the differences were between it being RS 5000 when it was originally done, and then now with the rezoning to—
So more likely, there's not going to be much of a difference, that the unit or the land use is going to be the same per the trip generation book, which is the multifamily, and so it's still going to have the same ADT average. The only difference might be the number of dwelling units that were assumed during the rezon compared to what was presented on the preliminary plan. And most of the time, it's more conservative during the rezon part because they don't know how many is actually coming in versus once they actually have the layout drawn up.
Right. And then just a follow-on about this traffic signal right here. So it's county land to the north, to the west, to the south of this Antelope Bridge Drive, it was at North Carefree intersection, but Colorado Springs controls that intersection.
Colorado Springs, I believe, has Carefree, and so that's the major intersection, and the minor roads are the county roads feeding into Carefree.
Okay. So in the end, we're left at the whims of the city of Colorado Springs to, the money goes in, it's more of a statement, it's not really a private question, really, it's just we're at the whims of the city of Colorado Springs to find—
To that buffer zone.
Right. To find the, when they'll put the signal there. Got it. Again, not a question for you, just making a statement.
Thank you.
And then just a question for the staff in terms of notification, how it works as compared to actually what it was a couple of years ago.
So currently, staff notifies properties within 500 feet of the subject property being rezoned, or preliminary planned in this case. Previously, how we used to do it was properties adjacent to this property. So it's a larger radius, it's not perfect, but it does notify more neighbors than maybe previously would have.
Thank you.
And the notification time is at least two weeks out from meeting. Is that correct?
A minimum of 15 days.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So a minimum of 15 to 30, and it goes from the date of the hearing date, so we have 15 days from today's date, which, and then it's about almost 30 days from our BOCC date as well.
All right. Thank you.
And then the final question, what was the, what was the file number for the, where you would find, where the citizen could find, where the drawings of what this will look like in the—
Yes, it was PPR 2442.
Okay, PPR 2442. So you can go and kind of look it up. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's all my questions.
All right. Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Seeing none, we don't have anybody online, do we, Jess? I forgot about that. Jessica? Anybody online? No? All right. Thank you. Chair will entertain a motion on Agenda Item 3D.
Mr. Chair.
Byers.
With regards to Agenda Item Number 3D, file number SP 223, for project type preliminary plan, Windermere, preliminary plan, minor amendment, phase two, I move for approval in accordance with the attached resolution. Two conditions and four notifications recommending files, I'm sorry, recommended findings of sufficiency with regard to water quality, quantity, and dependability. I would move forward this to Board of County Commissioners for their consideration.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Byers. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Marais. Any discussion on the motion?
Not really discussion. I just want to point out, we did receive the two other letters from the citizens, and we did, we reviewed them. Just at this point, with this preliminary plan, the staff has reviewed them, and we're addressing the issues as many as you can, but some of these issues really are not part of the preliminary plan staged review.
Very good. Thank you. All right. With that, we'll call the vote. Ms. Britton-Jack.
Aye.
Mr. Byers.
Aye.
Mr. Marais.
Aye.
Mr. Whitney.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, and this item is recommended for approval, five to zero. Okay, moving along. Agenda Item 3E, ID number, excuse, file number ID 241, Special District Service Plan for Stonebridge Metropolitan District, numbers one through six. Is there anyone here who would like to have this pulled and heard as a regular item? Commissioners? Anybody online? Okay. Are there any quick questions from the commissioners? No? All right. Chair will entertain a motion on Agenda Item 3E.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Marais.
With regards to Agenda Item 3E, for file number ID 241, for the Special District Service Plan, Stonebridge Metropolitan District, numbers one through six, I move for approval in accordance with the attached resolution with six conditions and one notation, and that this item be forwarded to the Board of County Commissioners for their consideration.
Very good. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Byers. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we'll call the roll. Ms. Britton-Jack. Mr. Byers.
Aye.
Mr. Marais.
Aye.
Mr. Whitney.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, and this item is recommended for approval, five to zero. All right. That concludes our consent calendar. We are now going to, again, shift the agenda. We have a presentation about our land development code update from Clarion Associates, and I understand that they have a, they need to get out of here earlier rather than later, so I'd like to have them— Mr. Chair. Yes. Mr. Kilbore.
Sorry about that. There's been another update, and that's one of the things I forgot to tell you this morning. So they'll be presenting at the end, sir.
Oh, we can keep them at the end?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Oh. Okay. Very good. That's better. Thank you. Okay, so forget what I just said. All right. So moving on, our regular calendar, first item is item F, excuse me, 5A, file number SKP 232, a sketch plan for Jane Davis Ranch. All right, and I see Ryan at the podium. Morning, Mr. Hauser.
Hello. So as the chair stated, this is file number SKP 232 for the Jane Davis Ranch Sketch Plan. For the record, my name is Ryan Hauser. I'm the planner with El Paso County that is assigned to this project. And then filling in for Daniel, we have Gilbert La Force for Engineering. Just FYI to anyone watching remotely, if you would like to speak on this item and have not yet provided a name and reliable phone number, please email that information to Just a reminder of the hearing procedure that was shown at the start of this hearing. We'll do staff's presentation, then applicant's presentation, public comment, rebuttal, questions, and then ultimately, this hearing will result in a recommendation to the Board of County So the current request before you is for a sketch plan for just shy of 400 acres, consisting of a little over 200 acres of a proposed minimum lot size residential for five acres, 133 acres worth of residential lots with a minimum size of 2.5 acres, a couple of commercial nodes along Judgeore Road, and the remainder of the property dedicated for parks, open space, stormwater detention. parks, open space, stormwater detention, trails, and rights of way. And then a large chunk of property, and you'll see on the map that I'll show, for the natural floodway that flows through the property. So a sketch plan as a conceptual plan contemplates maximums. So by saying the maximum development potential could be up to 93 residential units, they're not necessarily proposing 93 residential units. That's just the maximum that could be allowed based on the acreages that they've allocated towards the five acre lots and the two and a half acre lots. We won't know exactly how many lots are going to come into this development until we receive preliminary plan applications, which would follow should the sketch plan be approved. The property is currently zoned A 35, so in order to implement the sketch plan before we can proceed with any preliminary plans or final plots, they would also be required to rezone the properties to accommodate the uses that they're proposing. For a sketch plan, this is the approval criteria, and I won't dwell on this slide, but we can come back to it at any point if any of the planning commission members or anyone from the public would like us to hold on the review criteria. But this is the criteria that the planning commission and the Board of County Commissioners consider when they are considering a sketch plan. Here's the drawing, and as I had mentioned, it's kind of hard to read the individual land uses on the table here, but I can kind of explain it. This gray area represents the 2.5 acre lots. The green area represents the five acre lots. And then you'll see in the bottom here, they have two commercial nodes that are being proposed. And then you can see the large floodway areas running through the property that are proposed to remain as no build areas. Looking at the zoning map, one of the criteria for a sketch plan is that the proposal is generally compatible with the surrounding area and the existing land uses. So immediately to the south, on the south side of Judge Or Road, is the RR 2.5 zoned minimum two and a half acre lot size for Saddlehorn Ranch. And then immediately adjacent to Saddlehorn Ranch, to the east, is the Esteban Rodriguez Project, which has an approved sketch plan, and their preliminary plan is in review at the moment, and you all should see that coming to you shortly for their preliminary plan. Esteban Rodriguez preliminary plan contemplates something similar to this one. It's a mix of two and a half acre lots and five acre lots with a small commercial node up in the corner to kind of co-cat a corner to the commercial node being proposed in this development. And then you'll notice a little bit further to the southwest, we have Meadow Lake Airport. Meadow Lake Airport was sent a referral for the project and didn't have any concerns or issues with it. So with regards to the master plan, all sketch plan applications are required to demonstrate a general conformance with the goals, objectives, policies, place type with, of the master plan. This project is located within the large lot residential place type, which contemplates minimum lot size of two and a half acres and small commercial, limited commercial uses as supporting land uses, which the proposal is consistent with. It is also located in the new development area of change, which would also be consistent with what the proposal contemplates, which would result in a possible change in character for the area. However, based on the land use pattern and the other proposals in the area that I had mentioned with the zoning slide, staff has come to the determination that the change in character is relatively consistent with the other developments that we've seen in this area. So while it would be a change in character from an A 35 zoned agricultural property, it is generally consistent with the other developments that we've seen in the area. I don't have a slide for it, but one of the other components that staff looks at with regards to the master plan is the water master plan. We do not make a formal water finding with the sketch plan. However, we do receive kind of a more general water resource report, and we do look at water at the sketch plan stage. And we did receive a fairly robust water resources report that can identify a probability that they'll be able to have a water finding with their preliminary plan. So that's something that we do look at at the sketch plan stage as well pursuant to the water master plan requirements. So I just wanted to make sure I stated that for the record as well. And then at this time, I would like to turn it over to the engineers for drainage and transportation.
All right. Good morning, Gilbert La Force, Engineering Manager. So the property actually has a couple of branches for, that's identified as a FEMA floodplain. So along the south side, running parallel with Judge Or, there's a Zone AE floodplain. And then another one is a tributary, unnamed tributary that goes from roughly where my mouse is to direction to the northwest. And with that one, there's, the sketch plan showing a roadway crossing it. So we're anticipating that as, with the development part, development later on, that they're going to have to submit a CLOMAR or LOMAR for a potential change to the floodplain boundary for that crossing. And then the overall site is located within the Geek Ranch Drainage Basin, which is not part of the Drainage Basin Fee Program. And it's, and then the master drainage, master development drainage plan is anticipating six detention basins shown in blue on this, on this presentation. And then final design of that is going to be coming in later on with the preliminary and final plots. And then for traffic, so they've submitted a traffic, oh, this is the wrong presentation.
Wrong slide. There you go.
All right. So they've submitted a master traffic impact study. On the full build out, they're anticipating about 2, 2,800 ADT on the phase one that they identified, which is just the residential. Believe the ADT was around 900 for it. And the, the study was identifying a lot of off-site potential improvements for turn lanes, roadway upgrades, and signalization off-site, and 24 Stapleton, Judge Or, and 24, and Albert 24, and Highway 24. And we'll get more details on when each of those are going to be warranted as they come in with the refined plans. And let's see. Table six of the traffic study lists out all of those anticipated improvements. And.
Could you explain your color coding on the roadways?
Yes. So the, on this one, Stapleton highlighted in red is principal arterial roadway classification. Internally, the traffic study is anticipating that the road segment that's in blue right here is going to be a minor collector for this stretch here and down on the southeast corner. And then the blue or the green is local, rural local road classification.
Thank you.
Real quick, how about, Mr. Chair?
Mr. Mraz.
Judge Or Road in orange, is, what's the classification of that, of Judge Or?
I believe that's like a minor arterial.
That's a minor arterial?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
I'll have to check. I'm not sure that's off my head. I can come back and look at their GIs.
For the benefit of those listening or in the audience who may not understand the different road classifications, could you?
So I don't have the numbers up top of my head, but generally.
Just run through them in the high and low.
Yeah, so generally, the different roadway classification is more based on the anticipated daily traffic that would be on that roadway. So we have certain thresholds. I think 300 was for local roads, and then it just keeps going up. So as more local roads feed into specific corridor, then it gets upgraded to collector, and then those collectors that feed into another roadway that might get upgraded.
So in this diagram, green is the lowest level?
Yes.
And blue is the next level up?
Yes.
And red would be the next level above that?
The orange would be the next one.
The orange, excuse me.
And then, and then the red would be the high, the higher one.
And Mr. Chair?
Mr. Whitney.
Just for clarification, sorry, got lost a little bit. So the, the additional 2,800 trips, daily trips, that's on Judge Or?
It's going to be split. The, there's, they, I think, I believe they're proposing three, or I thought it was four access to, like, as you can see in this map. So it's going to be, there's a trip distribution in the traffic study that assumed where the split is and where traffic internally were going to go. I think that, was that the question you were asking?
Okay.
Anybody else? Thank you, Mr. La Force.
All right. On July 1st, our department notified the 24 surrounding property owners with the 500-foot buffer, as Ms. Bagley had stated earlier, advertising the two hearings. We did receive one response from one of, one nearby citizen that had a few concerns regarding water and traffic. The letter was received a few days ago, so it's not in your packet, but it should be provided as a separate handout before you. I did have a bit of a back and forth with that citizen, and they just said they had a conflict and weren't able to make the meeting, but just wanted to make sure that their comments were stated on the record. So with that, unless you had any specific questions for staff at this time, I would turn it over to the applicant for their presentation.
All right. Any further questions for staff right now?
Just real quick, that was the Mr. Fields's letter, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Mr. Gooman.
Scroll wheel to, to scroll instead of clicking to the next slides.
Sounds good.
He's got handouts. Thank you. Make sure you give a copy to Jessica.
And while he's finishing it up, we do get all the letters that people send in. Those are part of the record. And if we get them in time before the meeting, we do review those before we come to the meeting. So members of the public should be aware that we, we do read everything you send in. So, and we thank you for those. All right. Mr. Gooman.
Great. Commissioners, Bill Gooman with William Gooman and Associates, we're the applicant for the Jane Davis Ranch, with the owner being the Jane Davis Living Trust. We do have the owner in attendance this morning in case there are any items that you have that I'm unable to address. I hope that's not the case, but this is our team. We have worked closely with our civil engineer, water and hydrology. As Ryan Hauser mentioned, there is no requirement for a finding of sufficiency regarding water, but before you move too far along on something like this, we did have a full-blown water resources study done by hydrologist, Respect JDS Hydro was our hydrologist. RMG Engineering provided all of our soils and geology reporting. LSC Transportation provided our transportation report. And we also had an environmental assessment done on the property, and that was performed by Ecosystems. As Ryan had pointed out, we are requesting approval of up to 93 rural residential, single-family lots, two commercial nodes, and park open space on approximately 397 acres in the area that's identified with the red star. This works out to 0.23 dwelling units per acre, which is compatible with what has been approved by the county in adjacent developments. Our area of proposed development is within the red outline, roughly bordered by Judge Or Road, Albert Road, and Stapleton Road. We are immediately adjacent to the Pike Peak Boses Project, which the county had approved, an approval of location on the corner of Albert and Judge Or Road. That's in progress. Saddlehorn Ranch, which was approved for 218 RR 2.5 lots on 824 acres. This is presently under construction. And as Ryan also had mentioned, Beestabon Rodriguez subdivision, which is in this area, is currently in review for the preliminary plan, which would provide for 135 RR 2.5, RR 5, and commercial services on 493 acres. Sketch plan's been approved. We actually submitted the preliminary plan yesterday, so that, I believe, is in the third cycle of review. One of the neat things about this is as the planner and applicant of Jane Davis Ranch, we've also been the planner and applicant for the Boses Project, the Rodriguez Project, and the Saddlehorn Ranch Project. So it's given us a great opportunity to coordinate all of these developments, to make sure we have compatibility with adjacent uses. If we have 2.5 acre lots proposed, they will be adjacent to 2.5 acre lots on adjacent properties. Same with the five acre lots. We took care to make sure that the five acre lots are adjacent to lower density, five acre, 10 acre, and 35 acre parcels that are adjacent in this area. This parcel right here, if you might recall, is owned by Pete Lean and Sons. There had been a proposal for a concrete batch plant in this area, which was not approved. And that, of course, is not part of our development. It remains to be seen what actually happens with this.
Mr. Gooman, I just have a quick question. So do they still own the property then?
Pete Lean and Sons still owns this parcel.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, to our knowledge. I mean, that's what the assessor's records indicate. The property is bisected in a couple of areas with FEMA floodplain, which will be further mapped with a LOMAR and a CLOMAR, as Gilbert had mentioned. But we have taken that into consideration as far as buildable portions of the site. We do not propose for any construction to occur within a floodplain, but it is noted on our maps as far as where that is located. This is the cover page for our sketch plan. We do have 5,900 feet roughly of frontage on Judge Or Road. One thing that I, I mentioned was we do have a couple of commercial nodes proposed on Judge Or Road. They are immediately adjacent to Judge Or Road. One is in this location, and one is in this location. And just as an FYI, the Esteban Rodriguez sketch plan that was approved also provides for commercial services immediately adjacent to Judge Or Road. So all of our commercial is on Judge Or Road and not internal to the project. None of the proposed access points for lots or the commercial nodes are immediately off of Judge Or. of Judge Orr Road. They will be off of Stapleton Road. As Gilbert had indicated, there's a point of access here. There is a point of access over here. There is a point of access over here. And there is a point of access onto Elbert Road here. So we've accommodated as best as we could points of access onto existing arterials. The transportation study that was prepared does support our internal proposed access roads with these points of access. But again, there is no direct access from any lot onto any of these other arterials. All the access points are internal to the project. We do have a parks and open space plan that basically right now consists of trail lengths that bisect the property. And several areas are trail length, it's difficult to see here, and I can't point it out here, but you do have the handout, and you might be able to read it better on that. This was reviewed by County Parks, and they did have input as far as where trail lengths would be provided, and also open space tracks. Not developed parks, but open space tracks. And our open space tracks primarily are within the floodplain areas, which is a permitted use. And that's exactly how we've handled it on the adjacent Saddlehorn Ranch project and on the Esteban Rodriguez project. The open space tracks and the floodplain areas coincide. There is, we believe, consistency with the El Paso County Master Plan. We've noted the recommendations, conditions, and notations, which you'll find in staff's report. We're in agreement with the conditions that are appearing in staff's report. And we don't have a whole lot more to present. I think it's been presented adequately by staff, but we're requesting for approval of the Jane Davis Ranch sketch plan with recommended conditions and notations. And I'd be glad to try to answer any questions I have.
Commissioners, any questions this time?
Yes.
Mr. Byers?
So, Mr. Gooman, you did mention clomer applications. Is the intent to bring more developable ground out of the floodplain?
There is no development within the floodplain. Is that what you're asking?
Well, I know that you won't be allowed to develop within the floodplain, but if they're going through a clomer/lomer process, are they looking to get more ground out of the floodplain?
No.
Okay.
I think I'm understanding your question, and I don't know, Gilbert, if you're able to add anything to that, but...
It's just a question.
Yeah. We're not looking to gain any more developable area out of the floodplain.
Any else?
I just have one quick question. Just looking at the phasing on your next slide, it looks like Phase 1 will be the south, maybe the slide after that. The phasing, the southeast corner is Phase 1, and then you go up to the north, kind of west, corner for Phase 2, then Phase 3. So basically, everybody gets funneled until that crossing is made across the floodplain. Everybody's kind of pushed off to the east to come out Judge Orr and then travel.
Yes. The phasing plan that you're looking at here is pretty much conceptual at this point. Of course, we're looking to take advantage of access points onto existing arterials. And I do know we are in communication with another development that has proposed to run a sanitary sewer line, partially on our property down Stapleton Road. So that would have an influence on our phasing as well. We'd like to take advantage of being able to tie into that with lots that, for instance, are in this phase, that potentially could tie into that sanitary sewer line. The other thing is, we have an agreement with Meridian Services Metro District for extension of a sanitary sewer line from basically Highway 24 along Judge Orr Road to the Bosie's property that's on this corner. And we would like to be able to take advantage of providing central sewer system tie-ins to properties on the southern portion of the site. So these are all items that'll be flushed out when we get into the preliminary planning, but those, some of the criteria that went into on how we're proposing to phase this.
I guess my more basic question is, from beginning to project completion, when does the crossing across the floodplain, right there, yeah, when does that happen in your kind of view right now? The 50% point, the 20% point, the 90% point?
You're probably going to see this at about the 50% level, maybe 60% in the preliminary plan. Obviously, crossing the floodplain is a little bit more involved than just, you know, running a street from point A to point B here. And while we're identifying this, I don't know, I can't read which phase.
I think it's Phase 4. I know it's pricey to cross a, you know, to put a bridge. I just wouldn't want to see it be the last thing to happen, where you really have two communities that are kind of cut off from one another until, like, you know, the last...
I understand. And at this level of design, we are very aware of the need to provide it sooner rather than later. But right now, my best guesstimate would be at about the 50% level.
So there would be a maximum number of lots that you could get a building permit on prior to having that second point of connection?
Correct. And I'm sorry, I don't know what the maximum number is off the top of my...
It seems to vary.
Thank you, Mr. Byers. Anybody else? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Gooman. Appreciate your presentation.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Staff, have anything else want to mention before we take a break? Ms. La Force?
Not sure if you needed me to answer anymore about the FEMA floodplain that Mr. Byers asked, but realistically, once, if they're going to do the channel analysis down the road, if there's going to be improvements to that channel that somewhat adjusts that, they're going to be submitting a clomer. And then if they're completely leaving that alone, it might just be a lomer that defines the boundary of the floodplain a little bit better. And most often, we've seen it where it actually gets smaller once it's studied. So they would gain a little bit of...
So there'd likely be channel improvements, primarily due to the fact that they're going to cross it at some point?
Yeah, because, so with a bridge, depending on what the bridge design is, it might neck down the flow, so they would have to do a clomer on that.
And then, while we have you up here, so just rough math on all these developments that are in this immediate area, or introducing something close to 500 lots, is there any plan at all to address or make improvements to Judge Orr that you're aware of in the next 10 to 15 years as these things build out?
That I'm not aware of. I'll have to double-check on what the MTCP identified in there, too.
Yeah, because the TIS just basically kicks the can down the road.
Yeah, and most time, we won't have it on a sketch plan level on what would be needed.
We'd expect to see that at preliminary plan?
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else, Mr. Byers?
No, thanks.
Okay, cool. Mr. Hauser?
I'd like to add one more point of clarification. The rule is that they could have up to 25 lots on a single-access road. So if they are banking on their second access point being across the floodplain, then they'll be limited to 25 lots unless they provide another access point onto Elbert Road.
Okay, thank you. All right. With that, I see it's 5 past 10. I'd like to call a break before we get into public comment. So can we take a break and come back at 10:15, please? Thank you.[1272.58] Okay, we're running a little behind. Let's come back to order, please. Thank you. Okay, we had just finished the presentations for the sketch plan, item 5A, SKP 232, and we're ready to go to public comment. So as I mentioned earlier, we give everybody a chance to talk. So is there anybody in the audience who is here to speak in favor of this item? Okay, anybody here who wants to speak against this item? Oh gee, you guys could have told me earlier. All right. Commissioners, any final questions for staff or the applicant? The applicant have any final comments they'd like to offer?
Yes, Commissioners, there was a question. I don't know if it was you, Commissioner Byers, who had asked about the future of Judge Or Road. We do have 180-foot right-of-way identified on the plan right now, which there are preliminary plans for expansion of Judge Or Road that were required to accommodate at some future point. We don't have any plans for the actual road construction, but we do have the right-of-way indicated on the drawings.
Great.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Is there anybody online?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. All right, seeing none, we will close public comment. Commissioners, any comments on this project? Okay, seeing none, the Chair will entertain a motion. Ms. Britton-Jack?
Mr. Chair, with regards to Agenda Item 5A, File Number SKP 232, for the sketch plan for Jane Davis Ranch, I move for approval in accordance with the attached resolution with two conditions and two notations, and water sufficiency is not applicable at this time, and I move that it be forwarded to the Board of County Commissioners for their consideration.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Mraz, thank you. Any discussion on the motion?
Just real quick, I just, you know, a citizen wrote in, and I think through the applicants and the staff presentation, we addressed them. One of the comments was about water, you know, and really, the approval criteria talks about the probable compliance of water. And I think they did that in the services available, talking about the roads and the police. And I think that that's being addressed in this sketch plan, in the presentation, and in the data that compiles it all. So I'll be voting in favor.
Okay. Anybody else? All right, seeing none, we'll call the vote. Ms. Britton-Jack?
Aye.
Mr. Byers?
Aye.
Mr. Mraz?
Aye.
Mr. Whitney?
Aye.
The Chair votes aye, and this item is recommended for approval 5 to 0. Thank you all. And again, everybody, I appreciate your patience with the process today. Moving on, our next regular item is Item 5B, File Number VR 235, A Vacation Replat, Payton Ranches' filing number 1A.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Justin Kilgore, Planning Manager. The applicant is requesting to withdraw VR 235, Payton Ranches', filing 1A. They may resubmit and have this heard before this body at a later date, but they're asking to withdraw.
So they're not asking for a postponement to a date certain?
No, sir.
No? Just full withdrawal?
Yes, sir.
All right.
And the applicant's presentation is here today.
All right, thank you. Let's see. I don't think we need to motion anything on that, do we? County Attorney?
No, Your Honor. Er, excuse me.
You can say Your Honor, that's okay. No, no, okay. Very good. All right, moving on then. Agenda Item 5C, File Number ID 252, A Special District Service Plan for Falcon Field Metropolitan District, Residential Metropolitan District Number 1 and Residential Metropolitan District Number 2.
Good morning, Carrie Parsons with El Paso County Planning and Community Development. First, I just want to clarify the application. So this is an amended and restated application for the Falcon Field Metropolitan District, which does exist, and that includes in that service plan the creation of two new residential districts, just for clarification for yourselves and those in the audience. Sorry, I'm not sure what I'm doing wrong here with this in OneDrive. Apologize.
I think you have to scroll down.
Yeah. Okay, sorry about that. If there's anybody watching remotely and you would like to participate in the hearing or just provide some comments, if you would email our clerk, we will get you into the queue or read your comments for the records. Hearing procedure, Chairman, you've already gone over this, so I'll skip through this. More specifically, this is a request for an amended restated service plan, the creation of two new service plans with a maximum debt of $35 million. The mill levies are different, 30 for commercial and 54 residential. We also have the operation and maintenance for commercial down to five mills, wherein the residential it is at 10. And then we have the special purpose mill levy, which is proposed to do covenant enforcement for both the districts of five mills, giving us a combined maximum mill levy of 45, or 40, excuse me, for the commercial district and 65 mills for the residential. So again, that commercial district is the existing Falcon Field Metropolitan District, and then the two new residential districts that are proposed. Your mandatory criteria for disapproval and your discretionary criteria for disapproval. So if you do not find these, then you shall make a recommendation for disapproval. All right, so the purposes of this district are fairly standard before you today, with the exception of Purpose Number 11, which is Business Recruitment Management and Development. This is a newer provision that we are now seeing within service plans, and the applicant's representative will go over that as to why they're requesting that, in addition to the standard purposes that we typically see. A little bit of history on the property. Again, this property was previously rezoned to commercial overall in 2020. It then was rezoned from commercial to residential zoning district due to the fact that the property owners didn't feel that all of that commercial at that large scale was going to be profitable at that location. Residential was a more suitable fit at that particular area of the county. So those rezones were approved in 2022. The preliminary plan was also approved last year in the fall of 2024. Zoning of the property, so here you have it. You can see the commercial regional site is still there, right as Woodman hits US 24, and then the residential zoning providing buffers to the existing residential zoning further to the south and east. Mill levies on the property today, about 107.9. So for the Falcon Fields Commercial Metropolitan District, which has the lower mill levy, you'd be looking at a newer mill levy of about 147.9, and then those two new residentials would have a 172.9 mill levy if these special districts are approved. The master plan, master plan compliance in terms of place type, new development, were all considered with the rezone applications and preliminary plan. In addition to the finding that the rezoning, the preliminary plan and the special district meet those types, the master plan also calls out that development should pay for its own, and so we actually cite that with the master plan when we're reviewing a special district. In general summary of the application, there are no immediate governmental agencies that can serve this property in terms of design, construction, and financing of the public improvements, such as street drainage, water, and wastewater. There is, however, a overlap consent resolution in your staff packet, which includes Woodman Hills Metropolitan Districts that does provide those services, but in this case, they are excluding this particular property. That resolution is attached to your staff report, which makes this a bit unique. And then addition, Ms. Jack, you look like you have a question for me.
No, no.
Okay. So this is a little bit different than another district that we're going to hear. So this applicant has already gone through that exclusion process with this metropolitan district, so that backup material has provided. So the exclusion is final. Woodman Hills has provided that documentation. In addition to that, the nearby district, the Falcon Highlands Metropolitan District, has also provided documentation that they don't have the financial ability or resources to provide those similar services provided. So reflecting back on Ms. Fuller's earlier question as to what makes this difference, those metropolitan districts do have it in their service plans that they could do these services where water and a wastewater district as a standalone, they do not do all these statutory provisions. So big difference here, and that's why we're bringing this up and highlighting it for you. So is there any questions as to why the adjacent property owners or anything on the documentation of the adjacent districts can't provide services to this area? Lastly, again, we've already stated there is a debt authorization of about $35 million is the maximum. The public improvements estimated in today's dollars are about $22 million roughly. And so, of course, with that debt maximum authorization, it is very typical that the applicant is going to build in a contingency for rising costs in materials and labor. We see that in most of the special districts before you, and so they have asked for the overage to the $35 million over what they anticipate the hard cost today. Additionally, there was changes sent to staff this week on Tuesday, and so that service plan exhibit was uploaded into EDARP. It is not material to staff's analysis, to the report. It didn't have any bearing on the financial plan that staff utilized to review this application, and the applicant is going to go ahead and identify those very specific minute changes that they made on those exhibits for this body.
Mr. Chair? Mr. Whitney? Could I ask, just out of interest, if I recall correctly, this has a buildout of 2025 to 2031? Does that sound right to you?
Well, I'm not going to answer without looking since I had four of them on one agenda.
I'm with you. I'm not even sure I have that right. I think I do. But while you're digging, if that's the case, I'm just sort of interested in the size of the projected sort of contingency of almost $13 million bucks for a six-year buildout. I'm just wondering whether that's, whether you see that kind of thing. Seems like a lot of money for a short-term buildout.
Understood. I will tell you that there are four districts with you today, before you today. Two of those four have a contingency greater than 20%.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. And basically, I believe And basically, I believe that is going to conclude staff's presentation unless there are any additional questions for me.
Chair?
Mr. Mraz.
Can you just go back to the zoning? I'm trying to envision this. Go back to the zoning map.
Happy to.
So at one point, this backward seven was all under the Falcon Fields Metropolitan District?
Correct, and it was commercially zoned.
And it was commercially zoned. And now, since they said, hey, we're going to put two residential areas on this, the Falcon Fields portion of it is going to shrink down to where it says CR right there?
Right.
And then we're going to create two new special districts to cover the RS 5,000 and the RM 12.
Right, and so that is in line with the county's policy and model service plans because it allows the owners of that residential, those residential lots to have control over those special districts versus having one large district where you don't have that hands-on control.
So nothing from the current, I guess, Falcon Fields District, once it shrinks down to what CR, will affect the residents inside RS 5,000 and RM 12?
In theory, that is the case.
But in practice, something different.
I can't say. We don't, you know, district management, I don't dive into, but in theory, yes, like that's the plan.
Okay. I think I'm wrapping my brain around. Thank you.
Okay, with that, Mr. Trowbridge, I would like to ask the applicant's representative to come up.
All right. Take care.
PowerPoint, so. I graduated from college before there was all that PowerPoint stuff, so that's fine with me. We didn't even have cell phones. I just hit.
Yep, we're ready.
Okay. Good morning. Alicia Corley from Ice Noggle Seaver Poke. Here's a slide that describes our project team. We have representatives from the developer, PT Falcon Field, as well as our financial advisor here today, should the commissioners have any questions that I cannot answer. This is a vicinity map, which Ms. Parsons just showed you, the property at the intersection of Woodman and Highway 24. As Ms. Parsons described, the Board of County Commissioners has already approved a preliminary plan to zone the property, CR zone RS 5,000 for what we propose to be the residential district number one, and then RM 12 zone for residential district number two. The developer anticipates approval of the final plat for that commercial development later this year, and then approval of the two residential properties in the beginning of next year. For 74 homes on one of the districts, and then 95 single-family homes on that second residential district, excuse me. The timeline for the special district following this hearing today, we would have a Board of County Commissioners hearing, then we would go to the court and ask them to order an election, have an election in November of 2025, and then seek an order from the District Court organizing the two new districts. The site plan that Ms. Parsons showed you, and this is where I want to highlight the exhibits that we updated with the Planning and Community Development Department. Falcon Field Residential Metropolitan District down there at the bottom, number two, the map that we previously submitted showed 91 lots, bless you, and there are actually 95 proposed lots. So there are four maps in the service plan that we resubmitted, that update and correct that error that we made. This is something that I wanted to clarify from Ms. Parsons' presentation. The property in all three of these proposed districts is currently within Woodman Hills Metropolitan District. So when the original Falcon Field Metropolitan District was formed back in 2000, the property was included into Woodman Hills. There's an inclusion agreement. So the proposed Falcon Field Metropolitan District, and then these two new districts, are going to finance and construct all of the water and sewer improvements, and then would dedicate those to Woodman Hills Metropolitan District, who would then provide those services. In addition, one mill of the special purpose mill levy will go to Woodman Hills to maintain any park and recreation improvements if those are constructed. Then we had Woodman Hills adopt an additional resolution confirming that they approve of the creation of these two new districts and the same inclusion and service agreement would apply. The original service plan, as I just mentioned, was approved in 2000. It was for the 58 acres, and it was proposed to be purely commercial development, and today we are amending and restating the service plan to shrink the boundaries of that Falcon Field Metropolitan District and then create two new residential districts. The property was sold from the original developer. There's a new developer now, and the need arise because of the two residential districts that are being created. And I think we've covered this sufficiently, that there's going to be a commercial district and then the two residential districts with different lot sizes and different zoning. This is a summary of metropolitan districts generally, which I'm sure you commissioners are familiar with, that there are a great number of metropolitan districts in Colorado, and they're used for the purpose of funding public improvements, and they're consistent with user pay, and that the residents and owners of the district pay for those public improvements, that they will be benefiting from in their district. The responsibilities of this district, these three districts, excuse me, they're going to fund public improvements consisting of water and sewer, roadway improvements, drainage facilities, open space, and landscaping. There'll be ongoing maintenance responsibilities by the districts for non-dedicated streets, and then the drainage channels, detention water quality ponds, underdrains, an exfiltration gallery, and box culvert. In addition, these districts will perform covenant enforcement and design review, so that's a purpose of the request for a special purpose mill levy in the absence of a homeowners' association.
I'm sorry. So could you, what particular covenants are you talking about, like home design, facade design?
Yes.
Landscaping, fencing, those kinds of things?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Whitney.
Ma'am, I'm sorry. I'm a little slow. So let me just check on one thing. I thought I heard you say earlier that once all these, once the infrastructure has been built, that the Falcon District was going to manage them.
Yes, sir.
And I'm wondering whether, I think we have in mills here, we have 10 mills for operation, et cetera, for residential, and five mills for commercial. What are they going to be managing? What you just mentioned, or is the other district going to?
There will be improvements that these districts still have to maintain. That's listed under this slide here, what says maintenance enforcement responsibility. So there will be non-dedicated streets, and then there will be some drainage improvements that these districts will have to maintain that will not be dedicated to Woodman Hills.
Excuse me, Woodman Hills, I beg your pardon. So, okay, so the mills attached to those reasonably skinny functions are appropriate in your view, I take it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
The criteria that we have to meet today for approval of a special district, the Special District Act, our service plan has to contain these requirements. We've complied with the county's model service plan as well. We've used that, and that has been vetted by your staff, who has no concerns or issues with those criteria. As Ms. Parsons mentioned in her presentation, the debt authorization being requested today is approximately, is exactly $35 million for approximately $22 million worth of improvements. And then Ms. Parsons has covered this as well, the maximum debt mill levy, O and M mill levy, and special purpose mill levy that is being requested for all three districts, and those are different for the commercial and residential districts. Our service plan has the limitations required by the county's model service plan. We must provide disclosure to purchasers and an annual report each year, and then we just wanted to highlight that, of course, the approval of the service plan does not imply approval of any land use, and that we will still have to go through the county process for those items. This is a new legislative change, so this is one difference that we have added to the county's model service plan. The legislature passed this, this year, this bill, House Bill 251219, and we're not exactly sure how they made it retroactive to January of 2025, but that's what it says. So we have added a provision in the model service plan, which imposes a maximum debt mill levy imposition term for residential property of 40 years from the date of initial issuance unless the Board of Directors of that residential district, who's composed of homeowners, votes to extend that term. And this is just highlighting what you already have in your model service plan, 30 years maximum maturity period for debt issuance, which means the number of years until the debt matures and would become due and payable. And then what we have added, in addition to that, is a maximum debt mill levy imposition term of 40 years, as I just described. Service plan meets the statutory criteria that Ms. Parsons shows, and this is those same criteria. There's existing unprojected need for service in the area to be served by these districts. The service in the area, I'm sorry, the existing service in the area to be served by these districts is inadequate for the present and the projected needs of these new developments. The proposed districts are capable of providing economical and sufficient service to the area within the boundaries of the proposed districts, and then the area to be included has or will have the financial ability to discharge the debt. We've listed out some points under each of these criteria. There is a need, there's a high need for commercial and housing in the area. We would need to construct public improvements for these developments. These districts, as Commissioner Whitney noted, will have maintenance of some ongoing public improvements that aren't dedicated to Woodman Hills, and we will also provide covenant enforcement and architectural review services in the absence of a homeowners' association. Inadequate existing service. There are no other entities in this area that would propose to finance or construct the improvements that are needed for the development. As Ms. Parsons mentioned, we obtained a letter from the closest metropolitan district who indicated they did not wish to undertake this project, and then the district will provide the funding for maintenance needs that will be ongoing for the property. Criterion three, the districts will be capable of providing economical and sufficient service. These future costs, the mill levies for these districts are comparable with districts, and there's a slide following this one that lists out comparable mill levies. It will reduce the home end price, and the district will provide adequate and perpetual maintenance of improvements that aren't going to be dedicated to another special district, the county or another entity. And then the financial plan supports that they will be able to provide those improvements and continued maintenance. This is a slide that I just mentioned that shows district mill levies in the surrounding area. Last criterion is that the area to be included has or will have the ability to discharge the debt on a reasonable basis, and as I just mentioned, that would be supported by the financial plan, which is attached to the service plan as Exhibit D. Today, we're requesting that the Planning Commission recommend approval of the service plan to the Board of County Commissioners. We have a public hearing scheduled before the Board of County Commissioners on August 28th, and then, as I mentioned earlier at the beginning of the presentation, we will then go to the District Court to call an election and then seek an order from the District Court organizing the two new districts after the November election. I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you for your patience.
You're welcome. That's good. Commissioners, any questions for the applicant or for staff?
I have one. It's just a clarification. So with the Woodman Hills, there is no overlapping mill levy there, right? Because I believe Woodman Hills does a fee in lieu.
Correct. They have a zero mill levy, and that's in the service plan.
Right.
And then our districts would impose or will impose, if approved, one mill levy that will be remitted to Woodman Hills Metropolitan District for any park and recreation improvements.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Any else? Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Is there anybody from the public tier that wants to comment on this, either for or against? Seeing none, is there anybody online?
No one online.
Thank you. Okay, we'll close public comment. Commissioners, any further discussion before we do a motion?
Seeing none, the chair will entertain a motion for item 5C, file number ID 252, the special district service plan for Falcon Field Metropolitan District, Metropolitan District number one, residential district, residential Metropolitan District number one, and residential Metropolitan District number two.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Mraz.
With regards to Agenda Item 5C, file number ID 252, for the special district service plan for Falcon Field Metropolitan District, Falcon Field Residential Metropolitan District number one, and Falcon Field Residential Metropolitan District number two, I remove for approval in accordance with the attached resolution with six conditions and one notation, and this item be forwarded to the Board of County Commissioners for their consideration.
Thank you. We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Whitney. Is there any discussion? All right, seeing none, call the vote. Ms. Britton-Jack?
Aye.
Mr. Byers?
Aye.
Mr. Mraz?
Aye.
Mr. Whitney?
Aye.
The chair votes aye, and this item is recommended for approval, five to zero. Thank you, everybody. All right, moving on. You're making good progress today.
Item 5D, file number ID 245, special district service plan for Monument Ridge Metropolitan Districts numbers one through three.
Okay, Monument Ridge Metropolitan District, numbers one through three. Whoops, I'm using PowerPoint. Well, let's see. I'll give it a whirl, and if it works, it works, right? Okay, if there's anybody in the audience or watching online through social media, if you would like to participate, if you could please email our clerk, we will get you in the queue and get your for or against heard. The hearing procedure as outlined. This is a request for a creation of a new special district, Monument Ridge Metropolitan Districts one through three. It is currently and recently rezoned to RS 6,000 and residential multifamily. It's located just south of County Line Road and west of I-25, north of the Misty Acres Development. They are requesting a maximum debt of $20 million, and there is a zero-mill levy requested for District number one, which is an overlapping, overlapping district over all of the districts, numbers two and three. District number two is a residential district proposed at 50 mills, where District number three is proposed at 25 mills. District number three is also within, the land is currently within, the Misty Acres Metropolitan District as of today, and is currently subject to a mill levy of 30 today by Misty Acres Metropolitan District. It is vacant undeveloped land. It is located west of Misty Acres Boulevard and east of I-25. It is at the very south portion of this overall development. I'm going to show you a map in a second. I'm just kind of going forward with that. So we do have a proposed O and M operation and mill of 10 mills for all of the districts, and we also have that covenant enforcement, special purpose at five mills for all of the districts. Your mandatory criteria for disapproval and discretionary criteria for disapproval, same as the previous application, no changes there. Statutory purposes, very much similar to what you see and identified in your staff report. I've already talked about the history of that, of the dates of those approvals, of course, were last December. And so here's the zoning map, I-25 along the western boundary, County Line Road here. So RS 6,000, recently rezoned RS 6,000.
So RS 6000, recently rezoned RS 6000. And then all the lighter yellow, currently residential multifamily. Misty Acres subdivision is the hot pink area, if you will. This is the Doewood Development, referred to as Doewood Drive Residence. This area here, in the wooded area, is that area proposed for District 3 that will overlap today with Misty Acres Metropolitan District. So you saw the additional language in your staff report, and I'm going to put it on the screen for what we're looking at with overlapping districts that don't yet have any resolutions supporting that overlap or an exclusion or inclusion. So the mill levies currently, as I kind of already talked about, we have that 30 mils, so we're looking at the 96.3 mils today. If these are approved, we're talking about 131.5 mils for 1 and 2. And District Number 3, we're looking at 131.35 mils, because remember, we had a lower mill levy requested for District 3. We're not at the maximum mill levy requested. But it also has to contribute 25 mils towards the original debt that the Misty Acres existing district has to pay down the debt. So when you add them together, the existing 25 mils of the Misty Acres debt with the proposed mill levy of District 3, you get that same number. So the taxing is the same, although it's going to two different debt sources, potentially to pay down two different bonds, essentially. And the applicant will dive into much more significant detail. And I believe they do have their financial planner that created the service plan, or excuse me, the financial plan within the service plan here today to talk about the very specifics of that. I just gave you a very broad overview, a kindergartner's overview, if you will, and they'll get down and dirty to it.
I have a question too.
Ms. Britton-Jack?
Carrie, I do have a question now. Does, in District 3, do the, does Misty Acres have to go into some legal agreement with?
Getting there.
Okay, sorry.
Getting there, yeah. So I'm just going to skip forward. So overlapping special district, okay. So the statute says we can't, the board can approve overlapping special districts if the following three things happen. One, the commissioners have to include, approve the inclusion of that overlapping service district. So what you just saw before you, you had Falcon, the Falcon Fields districts being formally included by resolution and adoption into Woodman Hills. That happened, so it met these criteria. Here, in this situation, we haven't had that happen yet. Originally, the Misty Acres Board was going to hold the inclusion hearing on the 28th of August. They have provided evidence to us via a letter that they're going to move that up to the 21st, which if that inclusion happened or exclusion, it would meet Condition Number A of overlapping districts, if they're going to stay in the district, so two districts on top of each other. In this case, three, because you have District 1 being proposed, District 3 being proposed, and the existing Misty Acres district. So a little bit different. See. Services, they don't duplicate. So Misty Acres has provided a letter stating they don't have the financial capacity right now or the ability to do the remainder of the improvements for constructing Misty Acres Boulevard to County Line Road, realigning Monument, the frontage road, the S curve that a lot of us are familiar with there. There's some wetlands there. So that improvement would be all on this developer and ultimately the proposed districts to do those things. Misty Acres provided that documentation as a district. They can't do it, so they've met that second criteria. So again, C, we would anticipate that they're going to take a vote on the 21st, and that would meet Bullet C of the overlapping criteria. Very unique plan before you today.
Yeah, I think there may be an error in Number C. You say they agree to provide or consent to provide the same services. Would they, they're not going to duplicate services. They just have the, each district would have the ability to, say, provide water, but they would, they're not both going to provide water, are they, to the same residential area? Help you understand.
Sure, getting even more complicated here. The new districts are proposing to do an IGA with Woodmore Water and Sanitation District for water and wastewater services. After the new districts design, construct the water and sanitation, they will then, as typical, hand that over to Woodmore for ownership and maintenance of the water and wastewater services. Misty Acres will still continue to provide the services within their boundaries. So road, if for private roads, they will maintain those private roads, drainages, open spaces, those same provisions in the areas that they currently have. They're not closing down. But in the area proposed for District 3, for this particular service plan before you, the new service plan will do those provisions on that property.
It's basically like a subcontract, though. Although that's not the legal term for it.
It's very unique. This is a really unique plan.
Yes, absolutely.
I haven't presented one like this before. And that's why we're having this discussion today. So Ms. Segal thought it was important that we added this particular section, and this language was actually provided to me by Ms. Segal into the staff report for you, and then popping it into the presentation for you. And again, I have asked the applicant's legal counsel to go into greater detail for you on these very interesting relationships between all these moving districts.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Whitney?
Just real quick, ma'am, for procedural purposes. So if they don't hold their meeting on the 21st, and they arrive in front of the Board of County Commissioners on the 28th without a plan, what happens to Subsection B? Is the Board of County Commissioners, like, they tell us, I guess, or Ms. Segal would. But are they able to go forward without an agreed-upon inclusion or exclusion plan? Can they make a finding that it's okay?
I don't want to speak for Ms. Segal. If you're asking staff, I believe that that would mean that it would not meet this A, and we would need to point that out to the board, and they then would make their own decision. But it would be very clear to-
Yeah, that's a silly hypothetical. But I've seen meetings get scheduled that get rescheduled, and then all of a sudden, you got a problem. Okay, thank you.
And so I think it's important to mention, and you may know this already, but the special districts are on a really tight schedule because after the Board of County Commissioners hears them, then they have to get scheduled with District Court. Then they get on the ballot for November. So they typically will push forward hoping to resolve issues prior to the board's hearing so they can meet that tight court date and then getting on the ballot. So I think I kind of already said this. We mentioned the IGA between Woodmore Water and Sanitation. Again, Woodmore Water and Sanitation does not provide a provision such as constructing, designing drainage, roadways, taking care of covenant enforcement, et cetera. We have a letter from Misty Acres District stating they don't have the feasibility to do those things, that they are going to schedule this before their board on now the 21st of August. See here, and we have included within the service plan that financial plan that states that they can pay off their debt within the state's now 40-year term that you just heard about, the new statutory law. Now, keep in mind, this does not exclude the bonds from being set at a bond term of 30 years. That still stands. So we would anticipate refinancing, and that is anticipated within the service plan's financial plan. But they just can't have the debt last longer than 40 years. Any questions from staff before I ask the applicant to come up in split hairs on the details of these multiple districts and how they're interwoven?
No, we'll save fire for them.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. But it'll be somewhat non-adversarial. So you've had a preview, so?
I have. Hi, I'm Aaron Stutz with WBA Local Government Law on behalf of the applicant. As Carrie explained to you all, we're here on Monument Ridge. So I will dive into it, and if you have any questions, just feel free to hop in and ask me, and hopefully it won't get too adversarial.
The bottom.
Nope, that's fine. Nope, nope, thank you. It's at the bottom, you're right. There it is. Okay, so as we talked about, the consolidated service plan for the districts is submitted pursuant to statute, discussions with county planning commission staff, and then it's also in substantial compliance with the county's Resolution 22376 and the county's multiple district without a controlled district model service plan. So the development is a project area of 64 acres. It's anticipated to be fully residential with 340 residential units. So let's talk about this multi-district structure. So we've got District Number 1, which is the overlay operations and maintenance district. So that district will be responsible for operations and maintenance of the entire property. So as you can see, there's that hatching on that map. That is what Number 1 is going to do. The mill levies that Number 1 will impose will be that 10-mill levy operations and maintenance, and it will also be the 5-mill levy covenant enforcement. Now, a question has come up before about, well, you know, the service plan says all the districts can potentially impose those mill levies. This is true, but there are safeguards that we put in the service plan that says if 2 and 3 want to impose that mill levy, they have to have consent of 1. There's also a safeguard in the service plan that Number 1 cannot impose a debt mill levy while 2 and 3 are imposing a debt mill levy. So you don't have those overlapping mills with debt or operations and maintenance. Then we've got-
Question.
Sure.
So given the overlay with the other district, the Misty.
Yes.
I would assume that they have a maintenance mill levy that applies. Is that, are they getting double, Byers getting double booked, or is, how's that work?
Fair enough. Once it gets excluded, the operations and maintenance mill levy by Misty Acres is no longer applicable.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any other questions regarding that? All right. Then we've got District Number 2 and 3 are the financing construction districts, so they will be in charge of financing and constructing the improvements that will go in to the property. Benefits of this structure, it allows continuity of operations and maintenance over the entire project. So it's nice when you've got one whole project, and you've got, you know, neighbors on, you know, both in District 1 and District 2 that can have a say in, you know, who's the landscape consultant? Who's the snow removal consultant? They've got some continuity in that, in that process. That's really what the benefit is there. And then, yeah, as I said before, the service plan, provisions of the service plan will not allow for a overlapping mill levy between Districts 1, overlapping debt service mill levy between Districts 1 and 2 or 3. I did it again. Overlapping entities. So we've got Woodmore Water and Sanitation District. So the districts will construct, 2 and 3 will construct the water and sanitation improvements, and then those improvements will be conveyed to Woodmore for operations, maintenance, and ownership. That will, that mechanism will be an IGA between those districts and Woodmore. TriLakes Monument Fire Protection District is the district over that property. That provision is in substantial compliance with your model service plan. We didn't change anything there. So, you know, the districts aren't authorized to provide fire protection unless by an intergovernmental agreement with TriLakes. And then Misty Acres, the boundaries, as Carrie pointed out, currently overlap. The property is anticipated to be excluded at its August 21st meeting. Misty Acres has provided a letter consenting to overlapping boundaries until such property is excluded. So we anticipate that if, if for some reason that property is not excluded, that the meeting, they will approve that letter with the board, and then we can provide at least those minutes to the board. Upon exclusion of the property, the property will be subject to Misty Acres 25-mill debt mill levy, but will no longer be subject to its operations and maintenance mill. Here's a map of public improvements that are planned to go in. We've got some roadway, water, sanitary sewers, stormwater and drainage, parks and recreation, and landscaping improvements. Estimated cost is right around 15 and 1/2 million. Any improvements not funded by the districts will remain the developer's responsibility, and the county is not responsible for those costs of the improvements or the debt issued by the districts or the developers' development costs. Financial plan, so we've got a total debt shall not exceed $20 million. We've got a maximum mill levy imposition term of 40 years. As the previous applicant showed you all, the service plan has been amended so that you have that new provision in there. So our current service planner in front of you does have that provision. The districts anticipate issuing a 2026 series of bonds within $11 million, around $11 million issuance. And then we've got a 2036 series of refunding bonds for 16.8. Under the financial plan, the districts has a tax base that will support these issuances. Mill levy cap, so 65 mils total across the entire project. So District Number 3 will have a 40-mil max, and that's because of Misty Acres and that 25 mils. Are there any questions about that before I dive into that? Okay. So as I said before, we've got the debt service mill levy cap broken out here, and then the 10 mils for operations and maintenance, and then the special purpose mill levy cap. And I don't know if I mentioned this before, a special purpose mill levy cap is for covenant enforcement. And as we said before, District Number 1 will not impose a debt service mill levy on any property that District Number 2 or 3 imposes a debt service mill levy. Additional safeguards, we've got disclosure notice to purchasers about the property, about the metro district the mills was subject to. We've got an annual report to the county, which also includes that information. That's filed every year. And then if there are any changes in the base services, the issuance of debt in excess of the maximum debt authorization, the debt mill levy cap increases. If we want to create any sub-districts or inclusion of property over 5 miles from the combined area of the district boundaries, we have to come back to the county and get approval. And just lastly, it's just an overall of benefits of metro districts. Kind of got this before. There is no other public entity for this project that finds it desirable, feasible, or practical to fund these public improvements. There's reduced cost by going, using metro districts. There's reduced cost of public improvements through low-cost, tax-exempt financing. And it's proportionate. So rather than front-loading the costs for public improvements on new home sales, the costs are paid via tax-deductible property mills for a term not to exceed 40 years. Any questions?
All right. Commissioners, questions for Ms. Stutz? No? Okay.
All right.
Any questions for staff? Final questions for staff? Carrie's got something. Okay.
I do, excuse me, I do have one quick clarification. The applicant last, yesterday afternoon, did send a new service plan in correcting some minor typos. So the service plan that's attached to your staff report, there is a correction of typos in the executive summary. I think it's page 1 and 16. In the development summary, the service plan's financial plan, financial plan, which is what staff does the analysis off of for the most part in terms of numbers and debt max, is correct. So staff, my staff report is correct. Just wanted to let you know.
Editorial corrections.
There's an editorial correction. It is an EDARP dated as yesterday's late date. So when we move forward to the Board of County Commissioners, I will note that in the memorandum that there was a revision, but no change to the financial plan.
Not material.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. All right. Thank you, Ms. Stutz. Appreciate you being here today. All right, is there anyone in the audience who would like to comment on this item either for or against? Do we have anybody online?
No one online.
Thank you. All right, we'll close public commentary. Commissioners, any discussion before we go to a motion? No? All right. Chair will entertain a motion on item, where'd my notes go? Too many pieces of paper. Item 5D, file number ID 245, the Special District Service Plan for Monument Ridge Metropolitan District Numbers One through Three.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Moreays.
With regards to Agenda item 5D, file number ID 245, for a Special District Service Plan, Monument Ridge Metropolitan Districts Numbers One through Three, I move for approval in accordance with the attached resolution with six conditions and one notation, and that this item be forwarded to the Board of County Commissioners for their consideration.
Thank you. There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Britton-Jack? Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we'll call the vote. Ms. Britton-Jack?
Aye.
Mr. Byers?
Aye.
Mr. Moreays?
Aye.
Mr. Whitney?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. This item is recommended for approval by a vote of five to zero. All right, with that, does anyone need a break before we move to our info item? All right, seeing none, we'll continue on. Our last item of the day is a non-action item. It's our presentation from Clarion Associates about the updates to the Land Development Code. Exciting stuff. Good to see you, Mr. Dossi.
Good to see you all, too. By the way, Carrie's going through hell with all these districts at the same time. She's done a great job. It's, I've been there. It's not fun, but she's doing a good job.
Thank you. They seem to be using the PDF as opposed to the PowerPoint today. I don't care. Absolutely. Yeah, let's go ahead and, let's go ahead and take a little five-minute break. Let staff get, get the technology. Talking about our Land Development Code update.
Thank you. Commissioners, I'm Elizabeth Garvin with Clarion Associates in Denver. Here just to give you an update of the fun we've been having rewriting the code has been good. So let me tell you what we're hearing about, where we're going. Going to talk about the project for a minute, give you an overview of Module One, which is districts and uses. And we have had some really good feedback on that and been working to incorporate all of it, let you know what our working group has been up to, talk about accessory dwelling units, airport overlay, next steps, and then take any questions you might have. So we are on schedule with the project. As of right now, we have Modules One and Two drafted, and we are working on Module Three. You may remember from our first conversation, our goal was to get a working version put together before we go out and spend a lot of time with the public so they can look across the entire set of regulations. So we, where are we now? Late July. So we are hoping to have that out by late September. It may slide just a little bit, but then our goal is to still give the public the same amount of time to comment. So we may move the adoption date back just a little bit. That's a conversation we'll have once we get everything drafted. Our goals, we have four big goals for the project, to modernize the code and do that through a community-based process, making sure that we're regulating what matters in the county and not over-regulating. So we're really trying to find that balance, and it has created some interesting conversations. We want to make sure that we create tailored standards that implement regulatory best practices. So we're leaving you in good position moving forward, implement the master plan and the county's development policies. So we aren't picking from just one. We're looking across everything to make sure that the code is in good shape to work going forward. We want to balance predictability. A good code has predictable outcomes, but we know that there are unique circumstances with almost every project that comes in front of you. So we want to make sure that we give people a way to navigate through the code and speak to the unique circumstances of their project or site. And then finally, in doing all of this, we still want to make the code more simple and user-friendly. We want to make it searchable, and we want to make it easy to understand. We, we shoot for this goal in most communities, not only because it's nice to have a user-friendly code, but the more time and effort we put into this, the more relief we're creating for staff and applicants, to the extent that they can self-help, the applicants, that's less time that they're calling staff with a lot of questions. Or to make it simple for staff to find answers, that means they're going more quickly with applicants. So we work on that as an important impact of the code. Okay, so Module One. Few things we've got going on here. So we're looking to create a complete code. So we're, we're doing some background work. We're filling out how things get measured and updating all the definitions and clarifying dimensional standards. Every place where we can touch this code and make it as explanatory as possible, so we don't have people in front of you or the Board of County Commissioners saying, no, that's not how I understood it, the more efficiently this process works. So these are things we do both in Module One and across the code. And then particularly in Module One, we clarify how dimensional standards apply and how use-specific standards work. So cleaning up for clarity and readability. Some easy things we've done, we've updated standard adjustments. So, you know, we know that if you're putting solar in on top of your building, you may exceed the height limit. If we're still promoting solar, we may want to make it easy to do that. So there are some standard adjustments. You can, you know, put the kids' swing set in the side yard, as long as you're outside of an HOA, and no one's going to come give you a hard time about it. So those are updated standard adjustments. We're looking at doing open space zoning, just to make open spaces easier to see on the zoning map. That's helpful across a variety of conversations. We are reducing the number of special use reviews. If there's a use that we can write specific standards for, and it can be approved administratively, that helps applicants move through the process. Adding hyperlinks and graphics. So just to show you kind of what this looks like in the code, adding the graphics means that we can use an illustration to show someone, how do you measure roof height? Or how do you measure where your side setback is? And then cleaning up the instructions. So we want everything to be in short sentences. We want it to read in plain English. And so that's some of what you're seeing here in terms of the change. We also set up the code so it's drafted consistently. So across each zoning district, you'll see that there's a purpose section, allowed uses, and additional standards. So that helps us double-check that we have all the information in, but it also has, helps an applicant or staff, they know where that information should be found. There's some substantive, substantive updates, sorry, I gave that an extra syllable, that we've done. We've consolidated some of the residential zoning districts and expanded housing options within each district, trying to get at some of the housing needs in the county, making it easier to do smaller lot development, making it easy to do attached development in the right setting. So that might be in a more suburban or urban setting. We have created new mixed-use zoning districts that have three scales, rural, suburban, and urban. And so that kind of, I think the hardest one of that to conceptualize is why do we need rural mixed-use? But we may have kind of a more rural crossroads where we, like, you know, have a gas station and possibly a, you know, a big R or something like that, and we might put a small apartment building in there. So we have something that's a little more compact, but we're not eating into ranchland or ag land or open space. So recognizing that that does happen in some places. We've reorganized commercial and industrial districts into employment districts. And then we've created a new public and civic zoning district that allows housing on campuses, like on a church campus or college campus or hospital campus. We've had some great conversations with our working group, and we have two members from Planning Commission that sit on our working group. Absolutely nobody is afraid to ask, why are we doing this? So we have a lot of questions, and we have a lot of good debate about whether or not the changes we're making are beneficial to the county. So you may wonder, how do we update zoning districts? They do seem to be set in stone, but they're not. We've been gathering data. So we look at how much the district is used in terms of percent of overall acreage in the county. Where are we seeing areas of community growth? What districts are being used there? How do we align zoning with plans and policies for future development? To create a new district, we want to make sure that similar approaches or similar standards have had good outcomes in peer communities. We don't actually just want to test drive a never-used-before set of approaches with you and say, good luck with that. We also, we also look at best regulatory practices. In some communities, we do do that. And if you guys, you know, tell us, hey, we need a brand-new district nobody's ever done, we'll help you write the right one. But that's not necessarily the problem we're solving now. We're really trying to balance where El Paso County has been and where it is going in terms of the amount of development that you're seeing and preserving what's already here. And then we combine some districts. So we, we look across districts and say, hey, you know what, if we pull the RS 600 and RS 5, RS 6,000 and RS 5,000 together into one district, we can get a little broader, and we can maybe get a little, a little more range of development going there. It meets a need for suburban development. So within the draft, you'll see that some of the districts have been combined. Just in case you're curious, last thing on here, we do do this consolidation with the goal towards avoiding creating non-conformities. So we lean into, depending on how you look at it, we lean into allowing the, the most in the new district of what you could do in the previous two districts. So that usually means maybe a longer list of uses and a smaller lot size. We don't want to take away, we want to add possibilities. So that's where we're going with that. In the uses, the use allowances and use-specific standards, we've gone through the existing uses. We've added categories. So now someone will be able to look at residential, civic, commercial, industrial, transportation, to find the use that they're looking for. Just a, just a side note, I was on the phone with a codification service yesterday, and we were asking, you know, what, what do people look for? What, what are the most common things people look for from an applicant's perspective? They want to know either, one, what uses they can do on their property. So they're reading this table for the uses allowed in their district, or they know they want to build X thing, they look for a district where that's allowed. So where can they buy property to do the thing they want to do? So the goal in keeping the use table updated is to make it really beneficial to developers, and then to add clarity about the standards that are required for any one particular development. So, so we've worked to put updated uses in here. We have a clear process for interpretation. So when someone comes in with the use that none of us have seen before, that, you know, we think is a great idea for the county, there's a specific process to interpret new uses into the use table. And then if use standards are needed, you guys can do a code adjustment to do that. So we, we want to keep this as a, you know, is a very sort of dynamic part of the code going forward. So what has our working group been talking to us about? From the basics perspective, we've actually spent some time working on what are the different dwelling types that we anticipate seeing in the county? How do we define them? And how do we make sure the code accounts for them in all the right places? So backing that up, bigger picture, we've been talking quite a bit. So, backing that up, bigger picture, we've been talking quite a bit about housing. So, you'll see in the draft that the, there's a change that single-family detached dwellings, my house on my lot, that definition now includes HUD-certified manufactured homes. So, that means it's going to be built to federal standards that were put in place, I believe in 1976. Could have been '74, but they're out there. And in some cases, they will also meet Energy Star standards, but I thought I read somewhere that we're moving away from Energy Star. So, that may not be a big deal going forward. Tiny homes can also be placed on a lot. So, this is a bit of a change. You don't have to have a manufactured home community or a tiny home community. If you want to have a 5,000-square-foot lot and a 500-square-foot house, that's okay. All of this, we're putting out for public comment, by the way. You may be looking at me going, "Why is she saying that we need tiny homes on 5,000-square-foot lots?" Something we want to hear from the rest of the county also. We've clarified the difference between a house that has, a duplex house that has both units on a single lot and each unit on its own lot. We've had a couple conversations about construction. So, do, do we in this code allow for the future of construction, which could be 3D-printed? It could be more modular or prefab pieces coming in, could still be stick-built homes. We want to make sure that we're working across the board with that. So, the code doesn't get in the way of development that will be acceptable to building code going in.
Before you...
Yep.
Oh, maybe you're going to go. I was just going to ask, can a tiny home be an ADU? Or I should say, could an ADU be a tiny home?
Let's look at that when we get to the ADU slides.
Okay, oh, sorry.
For fun. We can, I think that we were pretty generous with that, and the answer, I think, is yes. But when we get there, we'll talk about it.
Okay.
Back to dwelling types. So, our, kind of one of our bigger umbrella conversations is, in the future, will the county allow the types of density of development that have historically gone into Colorado Springs? And our working group tells us the answer is probably yes to that. And so, that being the case, how are we defining apartments or townhomes? Where are we allowing them? And what needs to happen in terms of that zoning district and those uses? So, is it, you know, is this something that we limit to places that are, you know, really closely adjacent to Colorado Springs or in built-up areas? How are we putting these districts and uses together to reflect that change over time without opening the door to, you know, someone with more perhaps money than sense doing a development that really won't be served well over time? So, within each district, we've looked across the lot in building standards. We have made a few changes across the board. We've increased it, increased it. Wow, I think I need lunch. We've increased the maximum building height in the residential districts from 30 to 35 feet. That is, you know, that is almost a chipped-in-stone standard in most places. And so, El Paso County was about five feet short. It may make a difference. It may not. Where it might make a difference is in townhomes, you could probably do a proper third level if you're doing a longer, narrower home. But in some places, it just may matter, you know, in terms of how you could use the attic space or, you know, what we're doing with, what's under the roof, depending on the shape of the roof. So, going back to that conversation about how much density, the consultant team had proposed reducing density and saying, "Hey, it's a county. We're in a county." And that's not typically the kind of development we see here. But working group was pretty on board with allowing still up to 30 units per acre. So, that will be, right now, the maximum density in the high-density R5 district. And that's a question that we'll explore with the public as we go out to get more feedback. And then we started discussing, particularly in those denser districts, is this a place where we want to put a higher premium on residential design requirements? Do we want to say, you know, if, if you're doing attached units, we don't necessarily want a wall of garages? Some people do, some people don't. And so, we have taken that conversation and we're moving it into context with a whole set of design standards that will come out in Module 3. 2, 2, that's the next module. Okay. So, let's tell you a little bit more. We've recommended, and I think we have working group on board, I think a few people are holding their opinion to see how this shakes out, to retire the RVP, so the recreational vehicle park district. You can see on the map here, there are currently three RV parks in the county. And say, "Okay, we don't zone to this anymore. If you have this zoning, you can keep it. That's fine." But we don't want to take away RV parks. We know this is still a growing sector in development. And really, we've seen some creative stuff going on with like, you know, you've got the RV parking and the yurts and the whole nine yards, the tiny homes. And so, we've said, "Hey, let's just make it a use." And so, it will be an allowed use or special review use across other districts. So, someone can still open an RV park if they want to, but they're not necessarily going to have to rezone to do that. We've also put in these two public and civic districts. So, the first one I was telling you about is the campuses, where we're saying, "If you have a campus, you can allow some residential to take place there." I want to say, last time I was in front of you guys, there was a school here before me, and they were doing great stuff and they needed to do some residential on the site.
Was that the BOCs?
Yeah. So, this would have, this picks up on that idea. We're seeing it particularly as housing gets more expensive. School districts are doing it. Churches are doing it. So, this is intended to kind of create that mixed-use district. And then the open space district is going to be intended for larger areas of open space, particularly county-owned open space. But like the RV parks, you can still do a church in any district. You can still, you know, put a little hospital clinic in any office building. We're not saying you have to be zoned to this. You can still have a little park on your neighborhood. We're saying in big situations, so campus or large county open space, we want this to show up as a district and we're going to map it. So, we're not, again, not taking that use away, but we are kind of making it more visible in certain circumstances. So, we started on Monday. Wow, this has been a week. Talking with the Board of County Commissioners about accessory dwelling units. So, as of right now, El Paso County is currently exempt from the state legislation that requires ADUs to be allowed anywhere single-family detached is allowed. So, that's our first qualifier. It only goes with single-family detached. We don't have to have a discussion about, "Should a duplex have an ADU or triplex have an ADU?" It's single-family detached. The law, which took effect a couple weeks ago, three weeks ago, applies to municipalities with more than 1,000 residents in an MPO, a Metropolitan Planning Organization, or portions of county within both a census-designated place of greater than 40,000 residents and within an MPO. So, El Paso County has some places that will qualify. When I was looking at this, I think the one that will trigger it first is Security Widefield. There, by my last census check, they were 39,000 people. So, they'll hit that 40,000 if people keep moving there. And in that case, the code will need to allow an ADU for any single-family detached home. So, I've got a few more slides here. This is not it. We'll go through all of it and then we'll come back. So, the way we have framed this for a conversation with Board of County Commissioners, and we'll bring it back to you guys and the public in general, is the county's exempt, but you can choose to opt in. And this is a place where we can put ADU regulations in the code. We'll have plenty of opportunity to talk about it with Planning Commission, with the county commissioners, with the public, so we can have that feedback in place before it's triggered anywhere in the county. So, here are the rules from the state legislation about the ADUs. They need to, the allowed ADUs need to be allowed at between 500 and 750 square feet. The important thing here is that 500 is your bottom number. You can allow them to be bigger if you want to. So, if you have someone on a large lot with a large house that might want, you know, 1,000 square feet or 1,200-foot, 1,200-square-foot ADU, maybe they're putting it on top of a detached garage. That's okay. We can go higher if that seems acceptable. We can go higher by zoning district, by lot size. This does not need to end up being one-size-fits-all. So, if we want to get nuanced in here, that's okay. The ADU applications have to be approved administratively. So, that means we want to put all the standards in the code. So, we're confident that when it comes to staff, the approval reflects what the county wants to see in an ADU. The regulations can require the following. There are some limitations. So, we can require an extra parking space for the ADU, can require owner occupancy at the time of application, owner occupancy of the primary unit. There isn't an ongoing obligation. So, once the owner gets approved, they don't have to come in every year and say, "Hey, I still live here" or anything like that. But at the time of application, they need to say, "I'm the owner. I live here." We can allow a range of sizes, but we want to keep the ADU smaller than the principal dwelling unit. We run into problems with our definitions at that point.
Yes.
Exactly. Well, you can if you want to. Exactly. "I'm sorry, my 5,000-square-foot home isn't working anymore. I'm building my 10,000-square-foot ADU." Got it. A few other regulations from statute. The county can allow for multiple ADUs. We, at Clarion, we aren't seeing a lot of this. We did see it when we did Grand Junction's code. They said, "If you can get two on the lot, great. Have two on the lot." Made them happy. You can assess impact fees for things you're already assessing impact fees for or whatever you establish impact fees for. We can separate off, to the extent the county ever regulates short-term rentals, you can treat short-term rental regulations different than ADUs. They're not one in the same. And that's a different conversation, I realize. If we need to apply historic district design standards, we can do that. We definitely apply basic life safety codes. They have to go through building permit. We can require a water or wastewater capacity letter. So, there may be some districts within the county that don't have capacity to provide water. That is a conversation you can have as someone comes through the process. And we can define ADUs to include or not include RVs or tiny homes, shipping containers. It just depends on where the county wants to go with that and where we end up landing with design standards. So, I think this is my last eight. Nope, two ADU slides, two more. So, we can't require compliance with standards that are more restrictive than the standards that apply to the single-family home. So, an extreme example of that is we can't say, "You can build your single-family home out of wood, but your ADU has to be titanium." Right? We've got to kind of stay in the same place with those. We cannot require a larger lot for the ADU unit than would otherwise apply for a single-family home. So, we can't say, "In this area, if you, no ADU, you're 5,000 square feet. But if you want an ADU, you're 6,000 square feet." Everyone gets the 5,000 square feet. That's uniform across the board. And we can't try to get tricky with the definitions and exclude one of the three types of ADUs. So, on this image, we have detached ADUs. So, that is, you know, its own building or, you know, on top of your garage or next to your garage. If it's detached, you can have attached ADUs. So, either you had a wing on your 10,000-square-foot house that you're now turning into an ADU or you've just built a nice, small addition on, like my grandma used to live in. And then you can also have internal, which I don't think we're showing on here. So, I can turn my attic or my basement or if I have like a two-story house and I want to make the second floor ADU, you can do that too. So, we can't define it to prohibit any of those. Once we're in, we're in with however you want to do it.
But can we set a minimum lot size?
We can.
You can't, you can't. You said, "We can't have a larger lot size, but we can set a minimum, right?"
We can decide that, yeah.
We can say, "You can't have an ADU on a lot smaller than 4,500 square feet or something like that."
We can do that.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. And we can do that. And we can explore that also. When I first started writing ADU regulations, I thought certainly, you know, under 5,000 square feet, why would you ever do that? But if you, you know, if you have that two-story house on a 4,000-square-foot lot, but you're just breaking off your basement or your, you know, attic, you could probably do it. So, we'd want to have a bigger conversation about what that cutoff might look like, but we can definitely look at it.
And how do you differentiate then that type of ADU from another allowed use, like a mother-law apartment?
Yeah, so that ADU, so on that lot, that property owner may not be able to expand because of the lot size and the setbacks. So, we might say on smaller lots, you're allowed to, but you can't violate the setbacks. So, you won't be able to do an addition into the setbacks. That's going to limit what you can do. And I think that falls into the not tricky part of it, that we're still okay with that. It doesn't say that we have to say, you know, everyone can do it in any way they can do it. I think what it's saying is, "Don't try to get around it in the definitions." But we can still do it with our regular dimensional standards. You could, good question, no. It will, not a PUD in the areas that meet the 40,000-people MPO. You could exclude it through PUD elsewhere in the county. I will tell you from experience, what we're hearing in communities that are more built-out with PUDs that have prohibitions on ADUs, they have unhappy residents. There are people that would like to do this for kids or parents or whatever and that, not everybody, but some people, and they've been fairly vocal about it. So, but yes, that's something you could do. Okay, so, some changes that are, change from the current LDC into the Module 1 draft. So, in the current ADC, LDC, you guys have accessory living quarters. So, they have to be attached or detached to the principal structure or in a garage or as a tiny house is pretty broad. What we've done is kept that and added manufactured or modular dwelling to the list. And the manufactured home standards, hmm, no, I want to say building code added requirements for tiny homes. I do think manufactured, the HUD standards have some sort of equivalent standard. So, they will all meet code. We've expanded substantially where the ADUs are allowed in this draft for discussion. They're allowed across all districts, excluding RVP and the new mixed-use districts. But again, that's only going to be with a single-family detached home. In the current code, they're limited to non-paying guests or family. In the, in the code going forward, they're considered a separate dwelling unit and they can be rented. It doesn't, we have to move away from that owner occupancy thing. That's why it's only something we do at, at application. It does not have to be allowed to be short-term rented. And this is kind of where we had a bigger discussion with Board of County Commissioners the other day. So, this is, I think for future purposes and for conversation with the public, I'm probably just going to end up saying here, "It can be rented." And then we'll see where that conversation goes. We're not saying, "Build an ADU, start a short-term rental." They aren't always the same thing. And then right now, you can only have one per lot, and there's no change to that in the proposed draft. So, if you guys get caught at Target or the grocery store and someone wants to talk to you about the crazy new code, these are the big changes that are in it, and you can say it's open for public discussion. Please go comment on the website. And that's where people can share with us, like it, hate it, or don't know what you're talking about. But before I move on, do you guys want to ask anything else about ADUs or you want to see how the conversation goes? Yeah. All right. We can come back if something pops into your head. Okay, a few more changes. Can't exceed the square footage of the primary residence. I think this is the place where we're going to end up having more discussion. No design requirements or connection requirements beyond what will be applicable to single-family dwellings. We have required separate meters based on a determination by the utility service provider. Some prefer separate meters and that. And then finally, we have said in here, back to our conversation, you've got to meet the minimum setback requirements for the district. Okay, so airport overlay district. We're having a conversation with, no, I don't want Adobe Acrobat to be my default. Go away. Okay. With our military partners and Meadow Lake Airport about taking Colorado Springs adopted overlay, flight overlay and navigation easement overlay. So, this is part of the Part 77 FAA regulations and seeing how those can be brought into the county. the county. This would give the county specific overlay area for airports and start enhancing your ability to regulate uses or businesses around airports that are not necessarily aeronautic or aeronautical in nature. What we're looking at is, as development intensifies in the county, you do have some, you know, current residents who are fairly sensitive to what goes on around them. And we want to make sure that we have the right rules in place so you get the information you need to make decisions, but then still leave the decision-making in the hands of the county. So the feedback we've gotten is that what Colorado Springs has done is good, and we may go a step further in incorporating the FAA comments. So FAA does a review and they comment, and how can we use that for the decision-making process? So this will be a change that you see coming forward in a later draft because we're still having discussions about how this might work. The other, the other change that we would put forward down the road is the potential creation of a military compatibility area overlay district. And so it's kind of the same idea as the airport overflight overlay district, but it, it is drafted to speak to some of the issues faced by the bases in the county from their neighbors, to the extent that what we're regulating is land use related. And we're still in the land use code here. So we, you know, we've had some conversations with our partners, the, the last of which was earlier this week, that's why I was here on Monday. And we are talking about, you know, what incompatibilities cause problems for them and we need to balance that against private property rights of surrounding landowners and what does the county reasonably want to regulate. So we'll be working on drafting an overlay district and then I anticipate we'll have some pretty detailed discussions about it because this will be a new and different step. So first thing, now that we know kind of what the list is, so incompatible uses, adjacent building heights, noise attenuation requirements, and that can go, whoops, both ways. So Shriver needs quiet, and so what uses do we have around that? Whereas, you know, some bases might be loud and that's okay, okay, I'm gonna step over here. It's okay, but we want people to know that, hey, you're moving in next to, you know, an artillery range, you should know this.
We could, we could have used, we could have used this a couple of meetings ago.
Yes, we could.
We had, we had a, had a property, a project next to Shriver.
Yeah.
I don't know if, I'm sure staff probably brought that up or shared the Shriver.
I haven't heard recent.
You may, you may ask, you may want to ask staff about that.
I will.
Because Shriver did provide a letter with written comments and we may be able to, to do some data mining in there to help this conversation.
Yeah, I, I think it is top of mind for people right now.
Yeah.
And that's, that feeds into it. So we, so we got all their feedback a few times and we're starting the drafting process and we'll share that out with you guys and with our military partners and see where we can go to get this to the right place.
Okay.
So that's coming. Hopefully it'll help you in the future. All right, and then moving into our next steps. So yesterday, Justin and Kylie and a few people from our office did an outreach kickoff at the fair until there was lightning. Then you did it inside, right? Yeah, this dedication. We, we, you know, started getting some feedback. At this point in the project, we just want to really start educating people about what we're doing. Not a lot of people, except maybe us, go home and think zoning questions, more people are normal and they do whatever they do. But, so we, we want to start educating them, we start, want to start getting some pretty high-level feedback, what are you concerned about, what can we regulate to address that? So we'll be doing more in-person and online activities over the next few weeks as we keep going with the drafting. We'll feed that information back to working group and to Planning Commission, and the process will become a little more kind of rounded out and iterative as we go forward. We got our comments back from staff on the Module Two standards. So this is outdoor lighting and parking and landscaping, a wide list of technical standards that apply to different types of development. We'll get that cleaned up, we'll take it through working group. I'm limiting you to five comments in the future. So, no, I take that back.
The record shows that she's pointing to Mr. Marais.
Yeah, nothing makes us happier than knowing someone's reading the code.
Eric, Eric does an excellent job.
Yes, no, it was great, thank you. It was good, no, it was good.
If you don't want, if you don't want my comments, don't give it to me.
Yeah, no, it's good, I want everyone's comments, definitely want them. So we'll do that with staff, we'll share it out with working group, and then we'll share it with Planning Commission and then the public. And then in the fall, oh my gosh, we'll do the procedures. Procedures are usually pretty straightforward, people don't get very worked up about it. We do want to make sure we're building in enough flexibility though, and that's going to be where we focus our conversation with you guys. What if we allow these changes, but not these changes? And we'll come back with examples and we'll work through some site plans. So you can tell us some of the places you've had problems and wish that you could, like, wave a magic wand just to deal with this thing that we don't want to do a big workaround to. That's where we're going. Okay, I should probably be talking into this. Doesn't like me though. And that's it, that's it, that's where we are.
Just doesn't like being smacked.
I'm sorry?
Just doesn't like being smacked with your hand.
It doesn't, I know, I've smacked it twice, I'm sorry, little machine, okay.
All right, well, thank you, very thorough. Any, any questions, anybody we haven't raised already? No? Very good, really appreciate your time and your patience with us going through the process today.
Yeah, no, I always get to learn something. Today I got to learn that I'm happy I don't work at a law firm anymore where I was doing special district. Yeah.
Yes.
Everybody does their thing.
Always exciting.
Yeah, no, you guys kept very track of it.
When is the next working group meeting scheduled for?
So we were just talking about that. I think we're gonna send out a survey because we do have a set of questions on the use table that we want to share with the whole group. And then I would anticipate late next month is when we're gonna come back.
Sometime in August.
Yeah, exactly, yeah. We'll try to make it so not everyone's trying to get their last vacations in before.
Before school, yeah.
Exactly.
Okay, very good.
Great, thank you, thank you all for your time today. And I'm sorry about my tripping over words and smacking the poor mic.
You're fine.
Okay. See you again soon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Kilgore, any final comments?
No, sir. Good to go.
When's our next meeting? It's a tricky, tricky question, I know.
The next meeting is gonna be on August 7th.
August 7th?
Yes.
Thank you, Jessica.
Do want to remind everyone that there is a meeting on August 21st as well.
Yes, that was added back in.
Right.
Okay.
That's correct, thank you. All right, Ms. Harrington, anything else from the director?
No, sir, but I do want to grab you quickly when we're done here.
Absolutely. All right, and look at that, just before, well, okay, three minutes after noon, okay.
Good job.
We stand adjourned.[1772.95]